Good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 AM on January 4th, 2021, and I hereby call the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors to order. And I would ask if anybody would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everybody, to our first meeting of 2021. And may it be an improving year over 2020. I think we all are looking forward to that. And I just want to take time to say a couple things. First, I, on this, you know, first day of the new year, I want to thank all the Story County employees who have done such a great job throughout 2020. They helped us get through a very, very difficult year. And we know that year isn't over yet just because the calendar has turned to 2021. And we know that everybody will continue to do more than their part in helping the county continue to service residents and keep our residents safe. So, thank you, everybody. And I'd also like to welcome Latifa Faisal to the Board of Supervisors. So, your new supervisor.
Thank you.
Looking forward to serving with you.
Thank you. I'll be forward to it also.
We are, as usual, it has become our usual, providing public access to our meetings via Zoom. That's because of continued COVID-19 pandemic. And this is allowed by, quote, "Section 21.8.1." I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? If not, Headens.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted. Next, we'll go to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. So, we don't have any members of the public, I think, here in our meeting room, but we do have several people, I think, on Zoom. So, if there's any members of the public who would want to address the board, this would be the time to do so. So, please either unmute yourself if you're on the phone or we're starting on, or you may use the Zoom function to raise your hand. So, opening public comment. Are there any comments from the public on items on the agenda? Seeing, hearing nobody, we will close public comment number one. We'll head on to updates on COVID-19. Are there any updates from staff? Seeing or hearing none from supervisors. Supervisor Headens, have you seen any new numbers today?
I do. So, statewide, we, there's 284,886 positive. Yeah, 284,866. So, 284,866 positive statewide. 3,992 deaths statewide. And I haven't looked from last week to know that increase. Story County has a total of 8,074 positive and 31 deaths.
Thank you. It seems like, I know they're catching up numbers from the holiday weekends and all. It seems like I've seen some things, said numbers are kind of going up again. So, it's too bad. Okay, any other updates? Then we'll go on to item eight, Discussion and Consideration of Items Brought Before the Board With Request For Immediate Action. Are there any from staff? Seeing none, we'll go on to item nine, Organization of the Board, Election of Officers. And we will start out with election of a chairperson for 2021. And I would like to nominate Lisa Headens to chair the board for 2021.
Second.
Any discussion?
No. I'll accept all this stuff. I hope that I can follow in your footsteps, Linda. You've done meetings very, run them very, very well.
You're a pro at running meetings. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote on the motion. And I'll start by voting aye.
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 You are, okay. I'd like to make another motion if I could. I would like to nominate Latifa Faisal as vice chair for 2021.
Second.
Will you accept?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Merkin, aye. Headens.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Okay. Super. With that, Lisa, you and I trade places.
Sorry, I didn't grab my.
That's okay.
I gotta grab my name tag.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda, for how you've done.
Well, I've enjoyed it, and I know you will too.
Passing the torch. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate that. So, next is to set the 2020 schedule for the regular board.
Oh.
2021. Right. Did I say 2020?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good catch. Set the 2021 schedule for regular board meetings as Tuesdays at 10:00 AM with the option to modify as necessary.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? None. Faisal.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headens, aye. Okay. Now, we'll move on to agency reports.
We have. We've got a definition of limited agenda. It's, it's not on the agenda, but it's part.
That's right, yes.
It's part of studying the meetings. I'd make a motion if you want me to.
Sure, sure.
Okay. I would move that the definition of a limited agenda means it will contain no public hearings, no additional items, no agency or departmental reports, no other reports, and that the chair may make exceptions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Headens, aye. Good catch on that one, since it wasn't on the agenda initially. Agency reports, we have none. Minutes, we have no minutes that will be for next week. Next up are consideration of personnel actions. Do we have a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented?
I move we approve the personnel actions as presented. Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Discussion? None. Faisal.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headens, aye. Okay. Next, we have consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Headens, aye. Motion approved. Next, we have the consent agendas. Anyone wanting to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I have something to talk.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Faisal.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headens, aye. Next, we move on to consideration of resolution.
No.
Am I missing?
Supervisors as representatives for county of 2021.
Do I have something circled around?
If you look on the.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was under the, the consent agenda or whatever. Is that right?
No. We're gonna go, I'm 16 now.
There. No, we're at my item 15, right? Public hearing agenda? So, I went through consent. It's under additional items. Right. But we have public hearing items under 15.
Discussion.
Consideration of here. Yeah, I just got lost right at that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So, public hearing items, we have none. Additional items, discussion and consideration to the appointment of supervisors as representatives for calendar year 2021 to the listed boards and commissions. Wondering if there is a motion or if there's any changes.
I think there's one change. I, I put this list together, I used to ask the other supervisors, because I was chairing them, what their, their.
Interests.
Interests were, thank you. Yeah, what they would, cause they liked to serve on. And I just kind of tried to balance everything and put it together. Item 23, I did notice, isn't as I thought it was to be. I thought that Latifa Faisal would, would be on the decat board and Lisa as, as alternate. So, if that's okay with both of you, I would suggest that those be switched. Is that what you had in mind?
Yeah, that would, that would be fine with me. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
So, is it my turn to make a motion?
I believe so.
Okay. I would move the appointment of supervisors and employees listed as representatives for calendar year 2021 to, to the agencies listed, with the exception of the Story County Decategorization Board. It should be Latifa Faisal as delegate and Lisa Headens as alternate.
Is that it? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Now, I would just like to say, Linda, thank you for putting this together. I saw it, I appreciate. I think you did look at kind of all of our interests right now. And we know that we'll all have the opportunity to continue to expand and learn more in all the various areas and communicate to each other what's going on within each of those boards. So, with that.
Good job.
So, with that. Yep, I'm sorry. Sorry. No, no, no. Do you want to say some more? It was a long list, so. Good job. But that is been moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Faisal.
Aye.
Headens, aye. Now, we are at consideration of Resolution 21-45, 2020 Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance Appointments from the Auditor's Office.
So, you already made a decision in the above item, and this was just part of their requirements as a resolution to do this.
Okay, okay, okay. So, they need that so that personally they're appointed, they've got the resolution, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Great, okay, okay. So, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2145 as presented?
Yes. I move we approve Resolution 2145, 2021 Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance Appointments as presented. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? No. Faisal.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Headens, aye. Now, we're on to departmental reports. I have planning and development quarterly report.
Good morning, board. I'm just gonna go briefly through this, if that's all right. You know, I've been involved in the format and creating these reports for a number of years now, but this is my first time actually presenting one to you all. So, if a brief presentation is okay, that's what I've prepared for you this morning.
Fine.
Great. Can you see my screen okay? So, this is for fourth quarter of last year, 2020. On this screen, these are the zoning permits we've issued during the quarter, so October through December. In blue are dwellings. You know, I think with construction costs for lumber and materials, dwellings were, were down. We do have a number of dwellings that, you know, they had made some middles, but they didn't go through with the full plans being submitted. So, we have two pending that we're following up on. But I think, you know, the numbers aren't that far down in terms of zoning permits because they've had a lot of smaller projects, you know, accessory structures and solar arrays that we've seen, which is, has been a lot higher and is actually on par with, you know, the numbers we saw in 2017. So, that's an interesting trend. This is just a map of where they are located. And so, it's really, you know, north Ames and then throughout the county, actually. And this is our annual zoning permit. So, we have seen more since 2019. I didn't include the next era wind turbine permits. We had about 100 permits for changing out the blades on wind turbines in 2019. That was part of a conditional use permit. But in terms of other residential permits, we are above 2019 levels. Not quite at, you know, 2017, 2018, but still, you know, pretty, pretty steady, even with pandemic. And in terms of fourth quarter development cases, you know, again, we're not at 2017 and 2018 levels. These would include subdivisions and rezonings, you know, larger cases. But we are up from 2019. And then annually, we're about at 2019 levels. So, again, still pretty steady. 2018 and 2017 were, of course, our busiest years. But that, I think, the levels, while they're steady, we have seen a lot of other, you know, activities. We've done the FEMA public assistance request for the debris site. I, I sent out an email to you all last week about that, but we have made that submittal. And so, we are anticipating, you know, half of the lease payments and the advertising costs and the costs for labor for the employees that worked at the debris site to be reimbursed. We, we've done property research. That's when folks are looking at, you know, can I build a house on a piece of ground or divide a piece of ground? We've had seven in the fourth quarter, which is about the level we saw in 2019, a little bit higher, actually. We did our floodplain ordinance and math adoption this quarter, and I got word from FEMA this morning that they've accepted that. And so has the DNR. So, both entities have approved that. So, we will maintain our good standing with the National Flood Insurance Program. And we've hired a new intern. So, we will have new, two new, we'll have two interns starting on January 25th during second semester. And we have been working on a legal challenge related to the Raspberry Hill Event Center and cabins with the county attorney's office. Our Board of Adjustment did approve findings of facts for two conditional use permits for the Raspberry Hill Event Center and cabins. And that has been challenged, the approval of those findings of facts. So, this has been an ongoing challenge for a number of years, but this is a new component to it. So, that's something staff has been working on. Upcoming, at the debris site, we've gotten word that that, that all the debris should be chipped by the end of January. The contractor the state of Iowa has been working with is in Clinton County right now, and we're next on the list. And Secondary Roads Darren has been very helpful with that. They just asked that if there's snow on the site, it be cleared, and Darren said he could help out with that. So, we really appreciate their help as well, making sure the contractor can get out there. And then, we also anticipate rolling out development case applications with Citizen Surf in January. So, all our applications will be online, where folks can apply online for subdivisions and rezonings as well as zoning permits. And we will be having our annual joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors in February. I know Stephanie sent out an email to you all last week. That's where we set our work program, so look for some more information on that. And we will be hiring a new planner, hopefully somebody to start in early spring. I think typically, we go through our work program during the quarterly reports and what we're working on. Just a few updates. I'll just skip down to the fourth bullet point, which is the Ames Urban Fringe Plan. As you know, we're, we extended the deadline on that, and we're going to be discussing future action amendments to that plan. You know, the city of Gilbert, we're anticipating they'll be sending us a letter on their priorities soon. And then, I did reach out to the city of Ames. They did express that, you know, they'd like to wait till the adoption of their 2040 plan to really get to work on this Ames Urban Fringe Plan issue. And I believe that staff has a draft of the plan, but there isn't a public copy of the 2040 plan yet. So, there, there's a little bit of a delay with that plan. We will be working this next upcoming year on getting amendments to all of the chapters of our zoning ordinance to you all. We might be taking them, you know, one chapter at a time to our planning and zoning commission, because there's a lot to digest. But that's something we can talk about, the format of that review at our work program meeting. But we are going through each chapter of the code and making, you know, minor changes. Then, our intern has been busy looking at conservation design subdivisions, and we're currently making amendments to require, you know, consideration of natural features in designing subdivisions. We've also been exploring cities in Story County and other areas that have building codes and looking at that, which is a work program item. And we've, I believe, had been working on doing a survey of departments, county departments, to see if they waive fees for applications for government entities or other county departments. So, we'll be following up on that. And then, the last thing is that we will be amending our natural resources map from our C2C comprehensive plan. We went through a staff and worked with county conservation. You know, county conservation went through the map and made some amendments based on a survey of environmentally sensitive areas and other features to kind of make those boundaries more accurate. And so, that will require a large public outreach piece that we'll be, we'll be working on. You know, we're thinking something along the lines of what LeAnn Harder did for our floodplain maps, where we had, you know, the maps available online to review. And then, you know, an open house might not work with COVID, but maybe some sort of online comment where folks could, you know, provide a comment on what they see on the map and maybe doing a postcard mailing to folks with the natural resources that, on their properties, so they're aware of the process. And then, finally, we also have a work program item to look at the use of accessory structures as, as dwelling units. And that is on hold for the adoption of our, of the housing study. There are, I believe, some recommendations in that study related to that work program item. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Amelia. Supervisor Faisal, do you have any questions? I do not. Supervisor Merkin?
I have just a couple things and maybe more comments. I really appreciated the work that Planning and Development did on the debris management site. I know the demolition landfill, that's been on the work program for quite some time. And I know you've done a lot of work to try to find a site that, that could be used in case there's some kind of natural disaster. And there's been some hangups in terms of kind of construction materials and all, but I hope you can sit, continue with that as a higher priority because we know where someone's happened to other counties when they've had a tornado come through. And we really need to continue on that. I think the fact that we didn't get one site at least to use for the derecho was good, but we need to kind of continue to work on that one. And I know you've done a lot of work on that, Amelia, so.
I appreciate that comment. I didn't go through that one, because we've, we've heard a lot. You know, it's been on for a number of years, but that's definitely something we'll be discussing at the meeting on our work program. And then, I think, you know, FEMA recommends even preparing a debris management plan to go along with identifying a site. So, maybe getting a little bit more specific on, you know, we need a site, but also FEMA recommends having a plan in place that we need to prepare.
Have you talked to Marshall Town or Marshall County about their, I assume, when you talked about their experiences with the tornado?
I'll reach out to them. I'm writing notes down. I, I'm not sure we have recently.
The urban fringe plan, I talked to the mayor of Kelly, and he would like to, just so you know, he would, thinks Kelly should be involved or be interested in being involved in the urban fringe, which they have not previously. I do need to talk to Gilley County as well. Haven't done that yet. I've been waiting until they had their organizational meeting. But I'll get back with you on, on some of the other, the other agencies or the other entities that would like to be involved. And, and the third thing is the natural resources areas. This is difficult because it gets into money, but I, I think it's good to send a postcard to owners. But I'd ask that you think about how we can reach out more. I think we saw that with receptive ordinance and concerns that people said, why didn't you send a letter to everybody in the county and the unincorporated areas? Well, that would have been a lot of money. But short of doing that, I think besides the owners, there's some other agencies and some other associations who might really be involved and want to be involved with that. So, I would suggest thinking about who else you could, you could let know because a lot of people just don't go to the website or don't go to social media. So, we have, it's the continued difficulty of getting the information out.
That's a great comment. I appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah.
Amelia, I just have one question or comment. I heard you say that you've got, I believe, your intern that's working on some of the code sections to, to make sure that it's all cohesive with your department. I know last year, the last legislative session, there were a couple bills that came through that we were surprised at. I'm just wondering, I know through your association, you keep a list or kind of watch on various bills. Could you just kind of let us know or touch base with us at, or, you know, either go through Sandra or at your next report? Just anything that, that would really impact the county, I guess, like the boards and commissions once did? Just so that we've got just a little bit of a heads up, if possible. I know that's a huge additional undertaking, but I just thought, if you happen to have a little information that you're really concerned about in the long run, it would be nice for us to, just to be aware of.
Okay, I can do that. You know, I've just, we're on the, I've just put in a request to be added to the county zoning officials mailing list, where I think some of that information on the boards and commissions bill originally started to float around. So, I'll be sure to keep my eye out and see if we can't get involved or at least be on other lists and forward any information we see. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not saying, I, I don't want all the things that I was going through the legislature related to you. It was just like I said, this last time with the boards and commissions, we just weren't as prepared or knew that that was coming that could impact us that quickly. And I recognize that, not knowing since the legislature went on kind of a hiatus because of COVID and then came back and quickly passed it through. Those are things I'm just kind of, kind of wondering more about.
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you. Thank you for your report, Amelia.
Thank you.
We can move on. We don't have any other reports. Anything for upcoming agenda items?
I don't have any.
No, no. No, I don't either at this time. Public forum number two. It's time for the public to talk about items that are not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings laws, but may do so in the future. Open public forum two. Is there anyone who would like to make comments at this time? Wait a few seconds and see if there's anyone who raises their hand or unmutes themselves that would like to speak. LeAnn, are you seeing anything?
I don't know.
Okay. I will close public forum number two. Next up, liaison assignments, committee meeting, updates and announcements from supervisors. Supervisor Merkin, would you like to start?
Sure. I don't have very much going on this week. Next week, Monday, I think I have a conservation board meeting Monday evening, and then we are starting our budget work sessions next week. So, that's gonna be a very busy couple weeks we've got coming up. I think, I, I imagine that's mostly what we're gonna be doing this week is getting ready for work sessions.
Okay, great. Just getting settled in, getting my computer set up. I don't have access to my calendar right this second, so just trying to get settled in and getting ready for the next several weeks. So, wonderful, wonderful. I'm just still checking. I have on my calendar, well, I have the many assessors meeting tomorrow afternoon. Wednesday, do we have a CCMT meeting on Wednesday? No, we don't have it this Wednesday. It's been, okay. The 13th, okay. Yeah, I knew we were off, and so I wanted to make sure where we were at. I do have that, we have a budget review meeting with the auditor at 9:00 that morning. And then, on.
And then on Friday, I have, um, I see there's emergency management recognition. And then I have the, uh, uh, community health steering committee meeting, um, that I have as well that morning. So that will keep me busy. And then I have not looked at our new list, agenda, and put that into my calendar to know if there's anything else.
Do you want to get, now that you have a budget review?
I have on the calendar here that we have a budget review meeting with the auditor at nine a.m. On Monday. The sixth. Is that correct? Do you have that, Alyssa?
I have it on my calendar. I was gonna keep on the list. It will be on the budget review.
Okay, yeah, I have, I have that on my calendar.
I do. Yeah, that's, that's why it's really good for us to review this because every now and then we catch ones that somebody has and the others.
And I have done, yes, and I have done that.
So.
It's on the master calendar.
Okay, so, yeah, so we do, okay?
Okay.
Well, good thing I let you both know about that.
Yeah, you would have been.
All right. Um, anything else at this time? No? Uh, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Headens, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.